I call this meeting of the Rocky Mountain City Council, more specifically the Committee of the Whole to Order. And I'd like to welcome everyone here today. As many of you know, this is a working session of the Rocky Mountain City Council. It operates kind of like a committee in which we discuss in a lot more detail many of the matters that we're addressing. It doesn't function the way a normal city council meeting functions in the sense that there's not a public petition part of this agenda, but simply a working session. We have a number of items on this agenda for today. Part of the reason that we advanced the start time from 5:00 until 4:00. And the first several items which are real estate and attorney-client privilege-related call for a closed session. And in a closed session, that means that only city council members and pertinent staff remain. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session to address the real estate and attorney-client privilege matters.
So who?
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of you are welcome to stay in the building, but we'll close the door here and we'll open it up when we go back into the session. Thank you for being here. We are back in open session, and we've got several more agenda items here for the open session. We will need to go back into a closed session around 6:00 or maybe a few minutes after. So just to let everybody know how the process here this afternoon. So I'll reconnoitre the matter.
Thank you so much. This evening, we are very happy to ask the budget managers to present to the council and the public the proposed change, thank you, for the idea of capital improvement program. This was an opportunity, this is the first time we've seen it, we need to see the information, and there will be subsequent meetings for further discussions. So I'm going to turn it over to the chairman and ask him what he has to add.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon to everybody. We are prepared to present with you our 2020-2024 proposed capital improvement program for this upcoming five-year period. We do this as an annual update of our capital needs, and this is just an overview of what we will discuss today, and I will be mindful of the time constraints that the Council of the Rides brought forth in terms of talking about. I do want to start off by discussing some of our current year projects. Three projects, we just wanted to note, that are perhaps of significance. As you know, when we presented the CIP last year, when we presented our budget for the current fiscal year, we talked about the importance of roof repairs. We've got several structures that are in need of some roof work, and I just want to point out, the roof work over at the Judicial Center is, I think it pretty much done at this point, and that project was started earlier this spring and is complete. And this project, this picture which I took from the roof of the Police Department last week is over looking at the Senior Center, and you can see that they are doing the roofing there at the Senior Center right now. So that project is currently underway. So both of those roofs will be done in the current fiscal year, and then we, of course, in the CIP, have planning to then do the roof for the South Rocky Mountain Gymnasium and following that, the Imperial Center. So our four largest roofing needs right now should be done by the end of fiscal year 2021 or so, with South Rocky Mountain next year and then the Imperial Center after that. We also, another item just to show you, this is our newest fire apparatus, another fire engine that we purchased this current fiscal year, and this is currently still at the manufacturer, but it should be delivered here very soon. So we are in the process of having that also taken care of, and probably to fund it this year, that also should be delivered before the end of this fiscal year. Other projects we have going on, we do have a street resurfacing contract, and that should be, you should start to see more action here with the arrival of the later spring. We are continuing to work on the improvements on the first and second floor. The first floor, of course, dealing with the one-stop-shop facilities for Development Services. The runway replacement program at Rocky Mountain Wilson Airport, our contribution to that is being funded this current year, and that project is underway. And what's great was originally we had grant funding there for both runway work as well as some additional improvements, including the T-hangers. They were able to get grant money to cover the full cost, so the costs to us are actually a little less than what we were originally anticipating with that project. Ongoing IT system enhancements. This current fiscal year, we're doing some renovations to the Manhattan Building component of the Douglas Block. This is a work that we're doing throughout the buildings at the Douglas Block as we've taken ownership to address some issues that need to be taken care of with their ongoing restoration. And then also the driver's area and the former restaurant space at the bus station to make that available as a permanent driver's facility. Fleet vehicle replacements as well as improvements to their pistol and rifle range, as well as establishing some tactical training facilities to help with their development and training and preparedness in law enforcement operations. We received money from the Golden Leaf Foundation for improvements to the boat ramp at Sunset Park, and that project is ongoing. We have scheduled in the CIP money for the expansion of our internal use landfill for handling construction and demolition debris, that's located at the wastewater treatment plant. We have money also in there for sidewalk improvements. It includes the annual program we use that we get assistance from the federal government for the CMAC congestion mitigation, air quality, and plumes, as well as the safe route to schools funds, which I believe that's for Williford Elementary. Is that for Williford, I believe? The safe route to schools funding. And then last, also the widening of the, also some additional funds that we have to have, not only for sidewalk, but for utility relocations associated with all the various NCDOT projects that we have going on, road construction, including Hunter Hill. And then you'll also see in the coming five-year period, we also have funding set aside for the work on West Lane, as well as some other roadways that are being improved. Last, these are some other projects that are listed. I'll hold off on going through the list, but you can see, mostly these have to do with utility operations and have to do with projects that we have ongoing that are in the current year's capital budget or being, that were appropriated this current year and are being and are ongoing. With respect to our proposed CIP, we are proposing over the next five years, a CIP of about $183 million in terms of the projects that we have identified, and about 43 of that is programmed in fiscal year 2020. Now, this is across all government operations, not just general government, but also our utility operations, water, sewer, gas, electric, I'm sorry, water, sewer, gas, electric, and stormwater operations, as well as transit. So there's a lot of different operations.
What is the minimum threshold to qualify for CIP?
$50,000.
So any, so the projects that you named prior to the screen are projects that are already underway in this fiscal year, this fiscal year?
Yes.
And they are greater than $50,000?
Right, the project value is greater than $50,000. So maybe less than $50,000 this year, but the total value of the project is greater than $50,000. And this is just a breakdown of the expenditures by year. And as you can see, we have the next two years, and I'll, and a lot, the reason why those numbers are higher is because of some of the work we have in sewer. There's some work, and again, as we continue to refine the CIP, those numbers may change. And these are, in some cases, with the work in water and sewer, as well as in stormwater, are more of the largest-case scenario responses. Obviously, we only, we want to do the right thing in those projects, and we're trying to do our best to minimize cost as necessary, which of course leads to the cost going down in future years. Getting into, as you'll see here, the largest area of expense is in water resources, that's about $50 million. So combined water and sewer projects are over $50 million. Next, when you look at energy resources over the four-year period of time, almost $40 million, that's electric and gas, and that's pretty normal for them. Surface transportation, which includes the money we receive to the Powell Bill allocation, around $20 million. And then we get into the general government operations, about $17.5 for parks, $16 for stormwater, which is another utility, then $9 million for fire, a lot of equipment replacements as well as some facility work. Then our facilities, including, and that includes a lot of funding, we'll show with respect to City Hall and some of the improvements we need to make here in this building. Additional funding for public works, a lot of that's tied up in equipment as well. Police, along with facilities, the replacement of our annual patrol vehicle replacement program, IT communications, and then transit in Douglas Block. In terms of the funding, and this is predominantly in a large case for a lot of these utility projects, but also for some of our general government, given the size of these projects, we do use installment debt. And this $44 million with respect, the general government portion of it, we have structured it so that it's structured such that it's still consistent with our funding plans with respect to what the financial advisors have recommended. And if you have any questions, they'll be happy to answer those. But we have structured this in terms, particularly in regards to general government, also looking at our utilities, to make sure we're within those guidelines that are set by our financial advisor. Enterprise fund at 37.5, that's current money over that five-year period of time. General fund about $16 million, and as you can see, the other resources is going down the line for revenues. Looking at the projects themselves that we plan to engage in over the next five years. From a facility perspective, perhaps our, some of our bigger projects involved here at City Hall, first involve elevator replacements. This is the coming year, and you will see this in the proposed budget, we plan to replace all three elevators in this building. So the two elevators that are part of the City Hall side, and also the elevator that's in the Police Department side, those three elevators will be replaced in the next two years. So that is a, that's a major improvement that we need to take on here pretty quickly. We also have some additional work, and this is to continue the work on the first and second floors. We've started some of that work, particularly in design, and as we're going through this, there's a need to bring some facilities up to code as we start doing renovation work, particularly with a building that's over, that's almost 40 years old at this point. There's a lot of things that kind of get caught up into it, so it kind of makes you real aware, and we've been working very hard as a team to try to figure out what we need to do and try to, and then provide the best information on that. Same is true with respect to the Judicial Center. There's restoration of their elevator, which also needs work, as well as the fact that this past year, our Building Maintenance Division and Finance Department did a facility condition assessment and identified some structural issues that need to be addressed, and so there's money. You'll see that there's money in the coming budget for that, as well as for some work with respect to the judges areas of that facility. Improvements at the warehouse, again, another elevator. We really, we're really trying to do our best to address all these elevator issues at this time. The cooling tower at the train station, obviously this is a building that we have our own facilities as well as other tenants, and the cooling tower is very important with respect to the HVAC needs of the building. Complex lighting and parking improvements, this includes, in the next couple of years, repaving the parking lots out here, which I don't believe have been repaved since the building opened, as well as doing some other improvements. Property management facility, currently property management is still in the Weaver Building, and our intentions is, in this next couple of years, is to move them out of the Weaver Building into another location, and so that we can, and also decommission the Weaver Building and probably tear it down, because it does need to be, it is a space that we eventually need to open up. And then also our ongoing facility maintenance, and that includes maintenance at the Douglas Block that we have ongoing. From a technology perspective, we are obviously waiting to really kind of provide more, provide more on this, in this area with respect to once we bring on our Chief Technology Officer. So where, while we do have funding in the CIP for not only just general technology projects, but also for some specific technology investments for given departments, really as we move forward, those funds and those allocations will really kind of be more centralized and we centrally manage with respect to the role that the Chief Technology Officer will play in the organization moving forward. And that also, that also includes our communications operations, our radio and telephone systems. Talked about with the Douglas Block, this past year, we completed the financial, the facility condition analyses of the various buildings that are part of the Douglas Block complex, which allowed us, allowed Mike Vaughn and his team to put together a prioritized approach for building repairs that are going to be ongoing over the next couple of years. And then once that's done, and it's basically going into continuing the maintenance of the facilities, that's our responsibility as the owner of those properties. On the police and fire side, the most noticeable expense that's an ongoing annual expense involves the replacements of our vehicles. We've replaced about 12 patrol vehicles a year. We're going to, you're going to see an increase in vehicle, in patrol vehicle replacements because the auto manufacturers, as you know, are going, typical auto manufacturers that we use for our patrol vehicles are going away from sedans. They're getting out of the sedan business, basically, which means that the interceptor models and the patrol models are now pretty much going to be exclusively SUVs. We have kind of held off on going in that direction. Some other jurisdictions have gone in that direction, going ahead and replacing patrol vehicles with SUVs. We're now going to have to start doing that, and the reason why we held off was because it was cheaper to buy sedans than SUVs. So we are now going to have to move into a position of having to purchase SUVs, and that of course increases the per unit cost for the purchase of that equipment. So that's something that we are aware of and that we're going to have to work with. Also, we have set aside funding in the coming fiscal year for the acquisition of property for an evidence and property management facility. And this again is to properly manage and maintain for accreditation standards, evidence as well as other properties that are held by the Police Department. Also, funding is in the budget this year for our storage building for our reservoir police boat. This is to have it onsite at their, in a controlled facility to maintain the, to maintain the condition of the boat, as well as improvements to our fire stations, and then long-term, continue to work with the realignment of Fire Stations 2 and 3, which will involve property acquisition and development of sites. But our long-term plan with respect to those buildings, with respect to those stations is to realign it, yes?
Is that because of shifting demographic population within the city?
Correct. It deals a lot with the fact that once the annexation, I'm terribly sorry about that.
You just put your human, Ken, we had that.
I understand, but, I appreciate it. But the, the, those stations, when we annex, when we did the annexations around 2008, 2009, we had a, we had planned, of course, to build an eighth station, that was part of the plan. And when certain annexations got pulled back through legislative action, that put us in a position where our, where our station alignment was unbalanced. And so we are still, still, actually still in service contracts with at least one volunteer fire company to make sure that we are meeting our minimum standards, even though we pretty much provide all the services, still to make sure we're able to maintain an ISO 2 rating. This will address it. I mean, Station 2 is our busiest station, and it's also, I think, to also look at the reality that that station is also one of our oldest stations, and with the idea of moving them into a modern facility, they're kind of in a very tight space, not exactly the most conducive space to the operation of a fire station, it being on a street, right at a high-traffic corner, putting it somewhere that makes more sense. And then also, the other challenge with Station 3 is Station 3, part of its coverage area is restricted, is challenged because of its location and proximity to a rail line, to the Nash County Railroad. And so obviously, if there's a train running it and there was a call on the other side of the tracks, there could be a potential problem. So it's to move both of those stations into locations that are more conducive to operations to ensure proper quality of coverage. Going to Parks and Recreation, upcoming with some significant projects we have going forward is the redevelopment of Battle Park, and there is funding in the budget for the preparation of a master plan for the redevelopment, for a community to have such a wonderful rural, wonderful woodland space and an urban environment is a pretty significant asset that we need to do our best to work on redeveloping, as well as addressing improvements that we need to make in the Battle Borough community to kind of help them as well, looking at various improvements we need to make there. And renovation, ongoing renovations to our neighborhood parks. We have taken on some significant renovations in recent years, and we need to continue to do that. As I said before, we have roof replacements this coming year, South Rocky Mountain Community Center Gymnasium, and in the following years, the Imperial Center. We also have funding in the budget for Senior Center renovations, as well, I'm sorry, in the future, for Senior Center renovations, as well as a variety of projects that involve a lot of ongoing improvements, from Sunset, from small improvements at Sunset Park to other facilities throughout, including MLK Park and other facilities. On the public work side, this is the, kind of the end of the general government part, facility improvements to both our fleet maintenance and environmental service facilities, these are ongoing improvements that we need to make to both of those facilities, as well as equipment replacements for streets and environmental services, and continuing to address rollout cart replacements. We still want to try to do as best we can to make sure that everybody's using the same carts and to replace some of those older carts that we still have in service. Service transportation, we, of course, we're very fortunate because of the decision we made several years back to implement an increased vehicle fee, that we can do an annual resurfacing contract of significance, and we are, we are planning to move, continue with that. There was, there's money in there for payment condition survey in the coming years. Ongoing work with pedestrian improvements, as well as corridor enhancements, particularly here in the central city. Supporting ongoing roadway maintenance programs, a lot of our funding in Powell Bill goes to support ongoing maintenance directly, as well as the support that work that's done in the general fund for the Streets Division, as well as in stormwater operations. And then also some other areas, including inventory of our regulatory signage. There's a lot of compliance work that we need to do to make sure that we're, that we're doing what we're supposed to do to ensure driver safety and passenger safety. Going now to energy resources, this is our, these are our electric and gas utilities. The most significant project that they have is the underground relocation of downtown overhead utilities. It's a significant project over the next couple of years, and that project will start next year. We did, of course, significant undergrounding along Main Street as part of the Streets Gate project several years back. This will be to continue to expand that undergrounding to other parts of downtown, which is pretty consistent with where, with other cities that you go to, pretty much, they're all, their work is underground. Also, pole inventory, this is something that's done about every three to five years, is a pretty standard compliance measure. Transformer replacement at Substation 10. When I started here, it's been about 12 and a half years ago when I started here, we were doing a lot of work with upgrading our substations. Many of them had not been upgraded since they had been built in the 1950s, 1960s, or early 70s, and so we had a lot of transstation, trans, substation projects, and if you look at the CIP, you'll notice many of those projects are not there anymore. We've, we're kind of getting into the short rows, including a transformer replacement, as well as a transmission line on 14. And again, some of these are about to provide redundancies and provide, to provide loop connectivity to ensure quality of service. Distribution system improvements, equipment replacement, and then on the gas side, also continuing to provide funding for gas operations, maintenance of mains, extension of mains, as well as, they have an engineering assessment that is scheduled for funding that's coming here. On the water resource side, perhaps the largest and most significant project is the Beach Branch Outfall. And in the CIP, this is a considerably high-funded project. However, our Water Resources Division, Brenton Brent and his staff are doing their best to try to identify where the need is and to make sure that the project is right-sized with respect to making sure that the integrity of the, of the outfall can be restored in a, in an efficient and effective fashion. So even though we have budgeted from the standpoint of basically a full replacement, our goal is to hopefully bring in something that's more appropriate, and more, and more in line with our available resources. Another thing, particularly on water resources, that is affecting us for both water lines and sewer lines, the impact of these widening and utility relocations, and with respect to this, obviously this is something we know that's coming down the line as work goes along on the 301 corridor and other corridors where DOT is doing work, particularly widening work. We are responsible for reimbursing DOT for utility relocations. It used to be that we had basically a three-year payment program with DOT, and now they require payment in one year. So when they give you a bill, they don't give you three years to pay, they give you one year to pay. So that means we have to budget that money basically in one-year chunks, and it's a more significant expense. Ongoing replacements to our water lines, replacing old galvanized steel lines with modern lines. Ongoing improvements to our treatment plants, both for water treatment and wastewater treatment. Improvements to our sewer pump stations and lift stations. The, kind of now going into the next phase of our tank painting and maintenance program, where pretty soon we will have done the first phase of making sure that all of our water tanks have gone to that first initial repainting and maintenance that we did as part of this program, this annual program, and now going more into that cycle aspect of maintenance to make sure they maintain, that they're maintaining well shape, as well as continued implementation of the asset management plan that we've been working on in water resources. Lastly, with respect to stormwater, downtown drainage improvements, I know that y'all have been talking about that, and this is a four-phase project, and the first phase, the design phase, that Phase 1 starts next fiscal year. So when you see the budget, see it in the CIP and also see it in the proposed budget, you'll see that that program is underway. As well as work also, predominantly looking at Parker's Canal, Maple Creek, and Winders Creek, as well as ongoing smaller improvements throughout our stormwater, our stormwater drainage system throughout the city. The other thing we wanted to also just mention quickly is that we do have some unmet needs. Obviously, we understand that we, when we put the CIP together, that we are constricted with respect to available funding resources. So we have to, we have to right-size the CIP in order to be able to present it to you in a, in a manner that where we believe we can actually achieve what we're proposing. But there are a couple of areas that I do want to mention, that when you see, as you're kind of looking at it project to project, you may notice some of them are more of an unmet need, which means we have it scheduled, but we don't necessarily know how we want to pay for it. And one is probably the, the most significant one is really equipment replacements in the general fund. And this is everything from, this includes a lot of rolling stock vehicles. And basically, that financing limit that we put on ourselves of, when it comes to installment debt, which is around 2.5 million per year on average, that's really the limitation that we have, that we have to, that we have to abide by. And so that kind of limits our capacity with respect to funding, to funding these replacements. And then another project we have, and this deals with the utilities, and it's in the CIP, but we're still kind of trying to evaluate, and we'll be doing some work this coming year, to try to really see what the best path going forward and whether or not really that this is something we want to move forward on, has to do with upgrading our utility system meters. Our AMR technology, which we have in place for all of our water, I'm sorry, all of our electric and gas meters, the radio read system, and for a good number of our water meters, is really now kind of old-fashioned, and now they're moving to a modern technology. The challenge is that we've got to make sure that if we move and we migrate into these technologies at this point, that we're really going to see a return on investment. That's a lot of money to put out. A project like this could be over $10 million to do all of our meters. It could be well over $10 million to do all of our meters. And so it's really something where all of our utility staffs are working together to see what's really the best path going forward. Is, I mean, they understand that this is an older technology, but it was, it does, it definitely works in a lot of ways, it has some challenges in some ways, but the real question is, does it make sense going to the next step at this time? Or is it something more that we may need to wait a while, kind of see where, where technology is going, and perhaps hope that maybe is, as I like to say, I don't like paying for things at the R and D level, I prefer to pay them at the retail level or the wholesale level when we can. And so that's an area that we see some potential benefits, but the question really is, do the benefits, do the benefits balance or outweigh the costs? So that's really all I have with respect to CIP, and wanted to kind of do it in a time-effective manner, and I'll, if there are any questions.
Any questions?
That will come after we have a time to absorb it.
Okay. We've certainly got several budget meetings scheduled, so certainly will be more questions and comments. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think you might be ready to go into, back into the full session for personnel.
Okay. You're looking at the mayor.
I'm looking at the mayor now.
Okay. All right, well.
Unless you want to take a quick break.
How long do you think the next item will take?
Probably about, what, 10, 15 minutes? About 10 minutes.
Why don't we proceed with that one?
Okay.
To kind of disrupt, keep the flow going a little.
Got to get some questions.
Okay.
Well, this, this really is for council's information, we're not asking for any action on the part of the council of this town, but we do have a situation that is brewing in our community, and I thought it's important to bring it to your attention and give the staff an opportunity to discuss it with you and also to share with you what the next steps will be in addressing. So no, no action needed at this point. Why they're getting this together, this is a presentation, or a program really that was supported by both Development Services, Inspections Division, as well as the Police Department. This is a joint program that they're on.
Thank you, looks like we're ready. Just to give you a little background on some of the issues that we've seen here, in 2016, internet cafes in the city of Rocky Mountain, that use was removed as a permitted land use in our Land Development Code, also known as the LDC. And what's happening now is people are applying for uses that are permitted in the Land Development Code. However, once zoning, police, fire inspections goes through, in a lot of these cases, that certificate of occupancy is issued, they're operating outside of the use that was listed in that permit application. And we believe the majority of these are centered around internet sweepstakes, and some photos here of some places that we've been. We've compiled a list of, looks like about over 20 potential properties that we believe are in violation of that issued CO for that use that they apply for at the time. So we've got a map here, generally you see some of those that we know that are open and operating, some of those that are pending, and those pending would be, we've sort of figured out what they come in and apply for. We'll see some electrical permits, and it'll be a lot of stations around the wall, but we cannot deny an electrical permit as long as it meets the building code. So we get to a certain level, and we see, and a majority of them are just, you know, typically in the commercial corridors, so it really has no effect on, you know, regardless of where they're located in the wards, it's generally the, you know, commercial corridors throughout the city limits. And these are the types of uses that when they, they go in and look, some of them will try and expand the use. try and expand the use, and this is sort of what zoning officers and other people go in and see when they come in. So they're coming in, a lot of uses will say they want to be a copy center, or a smoke shop, a vape shop, used clothing, something. So when we go to do the inspections, none of this stuff is in there. So they may have copy machines along the wall, they may have clothing that comes from a, a unit next door. A lot of these are outfits, so it's not new construction, new development, they're outfits and they, and they are turning over. Now I might hand it over to the chief of this crew here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chief Robinson. First of all, as the Police Department, we investigate gambling on a weekly basis. As you can see, gambling is any person or organization that operates with any chance or any person that plays or bets on any game of chance, which either money, property, or other game of value is bad. So we investigate gambling, that's normal. My problem tonight, Sergeant Edmonds, who's in charge of my investigative, special operation investigating. And what we do, we compile a gambling investigation, we make sure it's thoroughly investigated, and we present that information to the District Attorney's Office. The District Attorney's Office will evaluate what we've learned and what we investigate and decide whether or not we need to proceed with charges to go forward with the case. So as this relates to internet sweepstake machines, I brought Sergeant Edmonds, who's in charge of those account operations, and he will go over those particular machines.
Good afternoon, city management, city leaders, members of council, and guests. My name is Sergeant J. Edmonds with the Rocky Mountain Police Department. I've been tasked with, me and my, me and my work group has been tasked with investigating complaints of illegal gambling and illegal sweepstakes operations that either come from community complaints, members of our community calling and advising of these locations, or locations that has been identified by our inspections department. And the main thing I wanted to just present to you, more so than anything, is what the statute says, because that's what me and my work group are going to investigate. It's not going to be personal opinion or anything like that, it's based off of violations of the law. So I provided you with a couple of different copies of some statutes that are pertinent. 14292, No Cali Judge Statute 14292 primarily deals with the actual gambling law, the parole gambling law in the state of North Carolina. And how that pertains to different machines that you might see on the community, that statute actually pertains to, which commonly referred to as stand-ups, or pot of gold machines that you may be seeing, that may be operating in some back rooms of small gas station-type establishments and things like that. When it comes to the electronic sweepstakes, that's the statute 14306.4 that I provided in the handout this way. And it does state that Section B, notwithstanding any other provision of this part, it shall be unlawful for any person to operate or place into operation an electronic machine or device to do either of the following: conduct this sweepstakes to the use of entertaining display, including the entry process or the revealed or provided, or, and/or promote a sweepstakes that is conducted to the use of an entertaining display, including the entry process or the revealed prize. And it's important to know also that it is intended, this section, to prohibit, prohibit any mechanism that seeks to avoid application of this section to the use of any subterfuge, pretence, or whatsoever. So, the, the statute itself is rather wordy, it is a long statute, which basically breaks down the 14306.4 statute. It defines the electronic machine as mechanically, electronically, or electronically operated device that is intended to be used by sweepstakes entrant that uses energy and is capable of displaying information on a screen. And then the entertaining display is even broken down in the statute as well, and defined as visual information capable of being seen by an entrant that takes the form of simulated, actual or simulated gameplay. So there's a couple of things that you may be hearing when it comes to these types of investigations. I just wanted to take the time to be able to address some of these. And most of them are in the form of frequently asked questions. So the first frequently asked question that we get all the time is, is there a legal slot or gambling machine? And the answer to that is yes. It is defined in the statute, No Cali Judge Statute 14306, subsection B.2, which is in the handout that I also gave you for your reference. The next question that we get often is, is there a legal video poker machine? And again, the answer to that is yes, there is, and that is defined also in No Cali Judge Statute 14306.1A. I don't want to get into the long details of it, that's why I provided it to you in the handout, so it's to be, and it's timed, so it's to be timed. Are fish tables legal? The answer, you would need to refer to No Cali Judge Statute 14306. That particular statute outlines what the state of North Carolina deems to be a legal gaming machine, okay? Specifically for that particular gameplay, merchandise worth a value of $10 or more and interchange or conversion of any merchandise to money will be a violation of that statute. So, now, is there a legal sweepstakes? Yes, there are legal sweepstakes. However, they've got to meet the statutory requirements of 14306.4 that I just provided to you in the handout, that meets the definitions that we just read and went over. There has to be a promotional offer, it has to have a start date and an end date, it has to have odds available, and it must offer customers free gameplay. That's basically the statutory requirements of the complaints that we're going to be looking into as we move forward with these investigations, looking for violations of those laws that I just explained to you.
So, so that's happening, you, you would shut some of these down or violating the law or is it fine?
Right. So what we're looking for is, we're investigating the complaints as we receive the complaints. And we're investigating each complaint based off of a violation of either one of those statutes, General Statute 14292 or General Statute 14306.4, making sure that each individual complaint doesn't fall in lines of the 14306 that defines legal gambling. But before the shutting down occurs, we're working forward and closely with our local District Attorney's Office, because we've been advised that that's the most important detail. And communication with the Southern Judicial District Attorney's Office, they've assured us that we bring them a good case, that they will move forward with criminal charges on that case.
Any other questions?
And the reason you are taking this action is to prevent people from wasting their money on gambling or to prevent other kinds of crimes from taking place in these operations?
The main thing is the community complaints that we receive. We receive community complaints of people feeling like they've lost money. We've also received various, very violent crimes that have occurred at some of these establishments. Some of these establishments have been known to have robberies that have been reported and some robberies that have not been reported, which leads us to wonder why not. More, more so, the violation of the law moving forward with that, is making sure that there aren't violations of the law currently investigating those thoroughly.
So essentially, our, our first step will be to provide letters for those that are violating our Land Development Code, give them a chance to cure that, maybe get back to the original use on that CO. And if not, it's, the next step would be police intervention and actions.
You have a copy of the memo. We've got to get that straightened out in your hand, so.
So.
Communicate to.
So, the community stores that they got now, those stores get those permits, how do you get those permits?
Like a gas station or a convenience store or something like that?
Or just a community store.
Yeah, and some of those, those aren't as full-blown as some of the other, you know, photos we've seen, so they may have a, a machine or two, some of those are the other ones that we listed on there that we need a little bit more action on to see, you know, what exactly is that. But there are some that we know that are full-blown. They get in there, they get the CO, they black out the windows, they lock access to individuals, so it's not a free entry, maybe you have to have your ID and do some other things to get in there, so not as open as it should be. So our first step would just be to look at all those, send them that letter that we've got in there, see if they come into compliance with our LDC at that point, and then we'll, we'll go on to Phase Two and further on.
Other questions? Thank you very much. I think at this time, we now need to go to the personnel. I ask for a motion to go into further session.
No, sir.
Any discussions? If not all in favor, say aye.
Actually, we're able to evaluate a written agreement that was developed between the city and Rocky Mountain Edge Cone CDC, along with the intent to implement monitoring requirements and criteria and schedule. We evaluated the home policies and procedures that were developed, we looked at their site review procedures, we looked at environmental policies and procedures, and we also looked at the home builder rehabilitation agreements that will be used in future going forward. We also looked at what they've implemented to track HUD program activity items, and we looked at the current relationship with HUD. And what we really found is, it's good news, we've made a lot of positive progress with HUD and with all the things that have been reported in this monitoring review. We did look at the spreadsheet that they're using currently to track the activities, found that all the criteria needed in order to stay on top of the different programs and activities has been implemented into this spreadsheet. This spreadsheet is a temporary measure and it will, they're in the process of implementing a project management module within Munis to be able to track, track this in more detail and, and have a much more robust system, yes.
Is that a module that other cities have used, though, is that something that's been developed because of the decisions?
Other cities are using. We also identified the two expenses that had, or two funds that had to be reimbursed. One dealt with HUD finding number four, where we had lack of evidence of an environmental review that had been performed at 807 Elm Street, and that amount had to be returned in the amount of $47,000. A second amount had, related to HUD concern number two, where there was a new home construction project that did not get the homebuyer agreement properly executed. And we went back several times to, to those homebuyers, trying to get them to execute that agreement, but since the material had not been presented at closing, they refused to sign that agreement. The CBD Department went ahead and refunded, that was $130,000, went ahead and refunded that. We just found out last week that those funds were actually returned to us, we did not have to reimburse that amount because it was a concern and not a finding. So while we did report in, in the report that you've received $450,000 over the last six years of HUD funds that had to be returned, recent development just came out, since we had already published the report to you, that 130 of that was returned to us. So a little bit better story in that regard.
Well, we've got a written copy of this.
It's in your.
It's in your, not, not.
It's in your.
So overall, past six years, $450,000 had to be repaid, but bringing that down, we're closer to $331,000 that had to be repaid. A lot of that, they, HUD would say, was due to staff turnover and inadequacy in administering the HUD programs. If they actually stay on top of the program and the policies and procedures and, and tracking that they have developed, you know, we're optimistic that we're not going to be in this same predicament going forward. In talking with the HUD representative, he was very complimentary about the current CBD staff and their level of knowledge about the requirements of these programs and administering this, and their level of collaboration with HUD to make sure that they were getting the right things in place, and, and their commitment to doing things in the right way. So overall, positive report, but again, I'm going to limit the scope. All we looked at was as it related to the HUD monitoring review from 2018 for the period of 2015. Any other questions?
Anybody?
I'm done.
Okay, I mean, that, that's what we wanted, that's, that's what I wanted when I asked you to do that, was to find out where we were and where, where our relationship with HUD was at this point.
And again, the representative that we talked to was very positive, very favorable. I think he had participated in the last two HUD monitoring reviews and said that the team that's in place right now demonstrated a solid commitment, and he had a lot of confidence in going forward and, and had favorable things to say about the relationship with Rocky Mountain.
And so for the record, again, this report made for some finding of 2015 HUD funds that was corrected by staff from 2018.
Correct. Which was? The current staff was correct from the prior errors that occurred.
And I think there was something in there that he didn't have a written deal that was. Fragmented. Fragmented with CDC or it had lamps or something.
I think their, their status had changed from the chodo to a developer, and the agreement had not been updated to modify that change. And so I think they've executed, executed a proper agreement at this point in time and implemented monitoring procedures that was also another recommendation from the HUD report. And I think the first one of those took place maybe last week, so they're, they're continuing to move forward, set expectations, and, and created a schedule and a calendar in order to make sure that that happens.
Did HUD representatives that you spoke with have any concerns about potential areas that we need to look for? Or they focused on the fact that they have a staff that they feel is competent?
The one thing they said is that there's a lot of work to be done, and they don't know that they're properly staffed to get that work done. So I think that that's some of the, the things, you know, going through the budgetary process right now, do we have the right skill sets and do we have the right staff to, to make sure that all of this continues to move in the positive direction? Yeah. And I know that they put a lot on the compliance officer that was just implemented, she's a part-time person, they think that person needs to be full-time, there's a lot of responsibilities on her plate, and so we want to make sure that we're right sizing her, her level of effort and that we've got the right person in role to be able to do that going forward.
Did they find, so, I just wanted to rehearse again, hear again from you, that the staff that we have in place competent?
Yes.
And capable?
Yes.
And knowledgeable?
Knowledgeable, competent, and capable, and committed. They felt, they felt very positive. I mean, he used the word competence, that the current staff would be able to, if they managed this the right way, he, he felt like they had the capabilities to manage this, for us not to get in a predicament like we were in the past.
The compliance officer that's part-time, is that because she's, she or he is part-time with the city or is it because she has two different jobs responsible?
Part-time with the city. I think it was someone who was in the department years before, I think she had retired, and I think they, she came back out of retirement. I think her initial desire was to work part-time, but I think at this point, she said she would go into a full-time role if necessary.
But is that an area, because it sounds like part of our issue is turnover, do we need to cross-train people in order that somebody leaves that we don't have people up there that know what they're doing?
They are cross-training, they've brought in HUD consultant and have done like a series of different courses for them. I know that they brought in a couple other groups to, to help train, and, so, and they're documenting everything, and so I, I think that they're headed in the right direction. I think they've made a commitment to doing that.
Laurie, did they, does HUD provide us any kind of periodic report or feedback in terms of, are they, are they concerned or worried about anything? Is it anything that's kind of automatic in that nature?
Do you know about that? I'm not sure.
No, I, I'm not that I'm aware of that, you know.
They did say that one of the triggers for this monitoring review was turnover in staff. If you have significant turnover in staff, then that's a, a trigger that goes up. But I don't know if they give you periodic kind of reporting, this is what we're concerned with.
They talk about going farther back, do we have any indication of any of the in-depth search data?
We didn't look at anything prior, other than what the scope of this review, so I'm, I'm not in a position.
That's a good dogs law.
To answer that, yeah. And we still probably have a couple of years of exposure where these policies and procedures were not in place, and so I, one of the big things is lack of documentation, so they'll do the environmental review, but they didn't document, they couldn't evidence, you know, the environmental review. So if we still have some of, you know, that lack of documentation, lack of attention to detail, we might have some areas of risk, but we're just not aware of any of it.
So we can look at that before they do, okay?
Certainly we could.
Given what you've said about the, the turnover and the, the training that's required and the expertise that's there, Rochelle, I don't really know how to ask this, but it would seem like some kind of periodic report from you to give us assurance that everything's in good shape. Is you're satisfied with it?
If you're satisfied with it, that things are in good shape would be helpful. I don't know if it's quarterly or semi-annually or something, just to give us an assurance, because it does seem like it's something that may have not been given as much attention in the past, as it appears to be given, being given now.
Before you go to the next question, Rochelle, would you mention this?
I'm happy to. Pola Carbon is my senior auditor. She was working for the city, and I recruited her out, and she's a payroll supervisor in our accounting department, and has decided to join forces with me, and has been actually deep in the event center and helping me with investigations on the hotline and everything else, so she gets around running.
The name again.
Pola Carbon.
Pola Carbon. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So the next item for me was to talk, just to give you kind of an overview of what I need with an automated audit management system. And what I'm recommending is a product called Teammate, and what it does is really integrate everything from a risk assessment process to my automated work papers, to, to report writing, to findings, a central repository for all the findings. It handles scheduling, timing, and expense reporting, but it's just a comprehensive tool to allow us to do everything consistently and integratedly. Right now, what we're doing is creating for the event center, I think I probably got work papers that, that deep, and that's probably an underestimate. This allows you to put everything in, you've got your audit work paper, you can cross-reference to all your supporting audit documentation, your audit evidence, you can then, you know, kind of cross-reference that to what your findings are, where your reports are, you can start to do trending analysis to see where you have commonality and different things, you know, across multiple different audits. So it just gives you a way to manage things in a much more efficient, effective way, and allows us to be a lot more prudent with our time, because right now, what we're doing is very, very time-consuming.
Any questions on that? Have we already approved that, Rochelle?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then finally, Mr. Manfred, who's here with us, will be, have with us the communications and marketing office, and they would like to present the most recent work that they have completed with this. And, to me, because these are the nights, so we have Robin here.
Those of you who don't know, my name is Robin Cox, and I'm a communications and marketing specialist. Over there, handing out goodie bags, is Jesse Nunnery, he's our media relations specialist. And you're about to see that we worked a whole lot in this team, because this effort that, for this branding, has been a true team effort. I need to get up a few more of these. What I'm handing you right now is a branding style guide. If you all remember, we adopted the brand new logo, the R and W circle that we got from, that you folks approved. Thank you, sir. What we did was, we actually did a survey last year and asked folks, and we asked leadership team to help us describe Rocky Mountain. What do you see as the biggest benefits of Rocky Mountain? Some of that described were things like the arts, family entertainment, family fun, things of that nature. We also had, obviously, sports, sports tourism. Other things we had included business and industry. So what we came up with were what you have in your hand. This is the branding style guide. We have produced training on this with folks here in the city, different departments, different areas. But one of our big things, you're about to see, and we are excited, I just got to tell you, we have a couple of jingles that we have produced. All of you, what you're about to see has been produced locally. The jingles are already airing. They are airing on 95.5, I'm not sure I get it right, Power 95.5 here in Rocky Mountain, Choice 92 here in Rocky Mountain, and in Raleigh, and starting today, 101 Kiss FM, 101.9 Kiss FM, which is a 100,000 watt station out of Greenville that handles Greenville, Jackson, and Newburgh. So we've really started getting this message out. Starting in June, our, our, wow, my brain just, just buzzed. Starting in June, our jingle, not just the jingles, but the commercials will start playing, and they're going to play on WRAL along with our air here at City Rocky Mount. Now, in addition to the five, we have five 30-second spots that are for broadcast, that's what you will see on WRAL. In addition to that, we are on Suddenly and on our air for the two at the end of this, which are our event promax. So I'm going to step out of the way. I will tell you that, when I say it's produced locally, the jingles, the pop, you're going to hear a pop version by a gentleman named Ronald Edge Productions here locally. We also have the hip-hop version, which is by Stacy Young Productions. Most of the video that was shot for the, for the commercials was shot by Studio L Productions, edited and produced in-house by our own staff. So, I'm going to step out of the way.
This would be Robert.
Well, I appreciate that. I will say that without Jesse, we wouldn't have the jingles, because he actually put us in line with both of our artists. You guys are going to, I hope you like this as much as we do. We have your... Yes, ma'am.
On page 13, there are those acceptable and unacceptable.
Yes, ma'am.
And I see that one's light, one's dark, and that kind of thing. Is there a rationale there?
Is there a specific one?
Well, okay, let's see. Second row down the left, first two in that row.
The tube with the blue sky?
Right.
What has the white? Yes, ma'am, because the darker one shows up better against that white. Chances are, if you didn't have the clouds in the background, the white would be fine if you didn't have the clouds, but that cloud, those clouds kind of take away from the logo.
So there's a criterion, all of them, the difference, the one that's more likely to win.
Yes, ma'am. Because if you can't read it, then you don't know what it is. So the goal is to make sure you can see it, that's why we're picking on just doing it. All right? Thank you.
Entertainment, the arts, a museum, over 50 parks and more make Rocky Mountain, North Carolina the center of it all. Visit RockyMountainNC.gov. So those were our jingles.
Obviously, the first was more of a pop crossover, and the second was the hip-hop. Mark is getting ready. The seven videos will all be played in a row. There is a very, very short break in between each video. Each video is 30 seconds. We will be doing, we are also in process of a, of a country-style jingle as well.
And then jazz, blues. So we can, we can all...
Yes, sir? Yeah, we thought about that for a second.
So that's a question.
With the event center downtown, there have been tournaments, and I'm hoping that the tournaments will continue to grow and get larger.
We already have a sports complex, softball, baseball, soccer combination, and now you're bringing basketball and volleyball. We just continue to get better and better. This has been an athletic town.
Then is belief in it. If you see it, then you can dream.
When it comes to sports, Rocky Mountain is at the center of it all.
Rocky Mountain is a very vibrant and invigorated city. Gives us anchor corn for everything else that goes on.
From the Rocky Mountain Mills all the way to the event center, Rocky Mountain is definitely a city on the verge of change.
The energy just exudes out of here.
This is a city that's at the center of it all.
Rocky Mountain is the place to be. It has the small-town vibe with the big-town benefits without the big-town problems.
We have the arts. We have wonderful restaurants. We have wonderful venues.
Just a little ways from now, we're going to see some real exciting things happen here.
Strategically located, Rocky Mountain is truly the center of it all.
Everything from making pottery to art to painting classes, just so much to do here. The planetarium and everything here, the children's museums, the First Fridays, we're really excited, the list goes on and on. Whether it's entertainment, or groceries, or a drugstore, or work, just to have it right here, close to home, in the center of it all.
From employment to fun, everything that you need as a family and for your family is right here in Rocky Mountain.
There's lots of free or low-cost things to do in Rocky Mountain, all of the parks and recreation.
I love going to the park.
From good times with friends, things to do on the leading ends, along with great activities to enjoy in the community, Rocky Mountain's the center of it all.
The city of Rocky Mountain hosts downtown life. The summer music concert series is back, and happening every other Thursday, May 23rd through September 12th, on the Imperial Center lawn. Come out for groups like The Legacy Motown Review, The Tangs, Jim Quick and Coach Line, Jam Out of the Board, and more. Doors open at 5:00 P.M., music starts at 6:00. Admission is free. For more info, visit downtownrockymountain.com. Thanks to the following sponsors. The city of Rocky Mountain hosts the Juneteenth Community Empowerment Festival, May 31st and June 1st, at the Imperial Center in Rocky Mountain. Learn about Juneteenth, an annual festival commemorating the announcement of the emancipation of slavery. Also, enjoy music from the We Are One Tribute, an AB honor roll celebration, and a performance from R&B recording artist Vivian Green. It's Vivian Green Live. Admission is free. For more info, visit downtownrockymountain.com.
The pops, the little black slots were, is a cable issue, according to Mark, because those do not have any black pops in them like that, where you have, where it goes to the light briefly. So, I'd like, yes, sir, you know, that is part, that is what we are doing to get the word out about the positive things that are going on in the city.
Yeah, we get a pop and send a directive to that lady that said Rocky Mountain's on the Mars.
No doubt.
Since all of them in the...
But, so, we did, we did want to share with you what we were doing and how it was going? Yes, sir?
Some question.
Yes, sir.
This is just a technical issue, which I don't know anything, I should, that little scratch at the beginning of the hip-hop, is that contemporary, do I still scratch?
I'll be honest, I'm not the one to ask this. I'll let, I'll let that's forgotten as hip-hop music.
That gentleman's probably about thirty, mid-twenties, something like that.
I hadn't heard that.
But, so, we are, and again, this has a broad reach. It's not just reaching one group. This has a very broad reach. So we hope you enjoy it, and in front of you, as you see, you all have goodie bags. That's some of the new branding that we have put out, and we are going to, you'll see some of these at different events. There's a really cool fan, and the little small thing that is in there is actually for your car, goes on your queuing. It is a USB charger for your car. It lights up when you put it in. But there's a bunch of things in there, so enjoy. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
When do they air, or are they already airing?
The commercials start airing, the main, the first five will start airing in June on WRAL. We are already airing the Downtown Live commercial on Juneteenth on our air, and they will be airing on Suddenly as well. Various networks on...
Well, we have links on the website, so we can...
Yes, sir. We will have, it'll all be on social media as well, Facebook and Twitter, and YouTube as well.
Okay, no, I think we do have one more agenda item we will...
Boards and commissions.
Boards and commissions, and so Pam, you handed out something earlier.
The first thing that you see is the release that was sent to the newspaper on the third page of that, the first part shows you, shows you the points that you've already made. The third page shows you, they can see that remain. So, the county, those who want to, like, Mayor Pace Winster has provided her personal history form, and I believe that he has been considering to air it.
I do, for workforce housing, I'd like to appoint Jim Martin, and I don't have his report with me, he's got the blank, I'm expecting.
So, I had provided you back when there was a vacancy on Central City, there's not at this stage, but there are some other vacancies where you might would be at. Ella Corvainas, do you remember when he first submitted his personal history form? He said he lived part of the time here, part of the time somewhere else, and so you all have instructed me to follow up on that, because it's handled. He says that he lives here full-time now.
So, on the community appeals board, there, there's a memo in there that says that they are really needing representatives from Ward 3 and Ward 5, which is at that radar. I don't say any of that here at that time. There is, I've included a personal history form for a young lady, Tia Hudgens. She's interested in human relations. There is not a vacancy there, but she sent it in, so I included it. The library board, Daryl Terry has been serving on that board. His appointment actually expired in December, but he has been continuing to serve. I have his attendance information included in that. He would like to continue to serve. And then there, there's also another young lady... So, on the community appeals board, um, there's a memo in there that says that they are really needing representatives from Ward Three and Ward Five, which is add that in your radar. There is, I've included a personal history form for a young lady, Tia Hudgens. She's interested in human relations. There is not a vacancy there, but she sent it in, so I included it. The library board, Harold Terry has been serving on that board. His appointment actually expired in December, but he has been continuing to serve. I have his attendance information included in that. He would like to continue to serve. And then there is also another young lady who would like to be appointed in that position, who's personal history form attached there as well. So, I don't know if you want to ponder that. Not as much as he did when he was first appointed for the last two years. Somewhat sporadic, but he's been present seven out of seventeen.
I guess the question is whether you want to rekick him or remember.
I'm not sure if that's Jane or Janie Ratcher.
I think it's Jane.
I encourage Pam to keep bringing this in the middle of the whole meeting until the meeting's done. You know, if you don't have somebody in your particular ward that you know, it could be somebody else that knows somebody, you could call a guy or call somebody that you can, that might be able to tell you somebody that could be good servant on this board. See if we can't go ahead and get it out, up and running. We've been working on it for a long time, so. Got somebody, then maybe call and have somebody, get somebody to serve you. That be did you find?
Her last name is Matthew, she's a little bit older than I am. And I can't call her first name by just being. Call it, let me miss this one. And she's already turned in.
So, any, any other appointments tonight?
I got one, but I can't, I can't.
Well, you don't, we, we don't have to wait till the next committee of the whole meeting. I mean, call Pam and let's, we can approve them at the next council meeting.
Yes. So, we wanted not to do it out of a meeting, so we wanted to cure.
Yeah, I know. I, I was aware of that. We want to approve the form.
Okay?
Any other appointments tonight? If not, uh.
Yeah, go ahead. I have one question that I want to ask Jet Rose, our city attorney. Our mayor, David Combs, our city chairman of the Rochelle Small Town in this entire council, because I felt that I was threatened tonight. And the mayor did not call this gentleman out of order. So, I want to know tonight, with this lynch mob coming down here and these people attacking, I'm not afraid, I'm not intimidated, but I don't think I have to sit there and be threatened by people every council meeting. And you have to gavel and don't call people out of order. Well, if, I'm, can I finish? So, I want to know from you, Jet Rose, if people continue to attack certain council members and have uproars in the, in the chamber, what is the protocol? If the mayor can't handle the audience, what is the protocol? Because I want to be in line, because if it happens again, something needs to happen.
The mayor, mayor can use his gavel.
If he doesn't use his gavel, what do this council have the authority to do?
This council or one or more council members can make a point of order. Make a point of order, providing officer. At that point, he will be required to take some action.
So, we hear that, right? So, if it happens again, the mayor doesn't use the gavel to call a person out of order. How many council members?
Well, just ones, but if you have more than one, it lends more support to it.
So, when we say.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, point of order.
And then what?
That's a signal to authorize him to use the gavel and ultimately to, ultimately to, to evict the man from the, from the council.
Because I'm saying this because this is serious. People are killing folks, people are going to school shooting, and with this temperament and this environment, we should not take this lightly. Now, if it was the other way around, I'm being serious, not paying the race card, but it would not be tolerated. Now, I want justice for my life and for the rest of the council members. Because if it was other managers and other mayors before us, when we're having people coming here protesting for justice and here police wrapping around this bill, I don't feel we have the same coverage. And I've been saying it for the last two years, and something has to be done. And this is serious. I mean, who want to be in a body bag for serving their community? I don't take this as a joke. I'm not afraid, but I'm not gonna sit there and continue to be attacked and people sit silently and not say anything and force me to say something and then I look like the bad guy, when we got policies and procedures and we got the law on our side. It's not fair. So, from this point on, y'all can call me whatever you want to, but I'm not gonna take it. You can excuse, you can escort me out of here and call the law, but I'm not gonna take it no more. Because they have three minutes to speak, that's our rule, and the council can speak or not. So, that's what I wanna say.
I got a question. If there's people like that, that we know that historically have done that, is there a number of people speaking who they can call?
You got to write and speak until they get out of order, but you're. Yeah, you can, they got to speak twice, but the next time they come and they, they get out of order, you can, you can have them remove and leave. So, you go through where you, where you ask them to leave. You just, Mr. X or Ms. Y, you disrupted the date, please leave. If they don't, if they refuse to leave, that's when you can have them arrested.
I definitely want to thank you, Nigel, for bringing that man out and, and, you know, and I think that, yes, it is pretty tough to have someone calling your name out in a derogatory way.
And I, I just wanna say, it's not just here, it's in, it's an environment, it's fomented by the H.I.G.T.V. and the Trashy Talk Show in the mornings. It's, it's undergirded by social media websites that put all kinds of things on the tree, allegations that are unsubstantiated for cool and mean and unethical. And, uh, Ms. Manager, I wish you would start opening up your mouth and addressing the lies that are being spoken, like you have no right to park in a spot reserved for military individuals when your husband served in the military.
Oh, yeah, military.
And if they had good sense, they would have looked at the decal. But to me, it's problematic to have people following folk across town, taking pictures of you wherever you go. That's stalking. And, and people are rabid, and it is racist. I don't care if folks don't wanna be called, it's stop acting it. If you don't wanna be called racist, don't act racist. Don't say things that are racist. And it is unfair, and I'm not gonna put up with it. I've, I've said it again. I'm not putting up with words and actions and not calling it what it is. Just don't do it. If you wanna be called it, don't do it. That's pretty simple. And it's not right to have a double standard of decorum when other people, just because they're not elected officially, can say what they wanna say. And that's wrong, and it's immoral, and it's unethical. So, I'm just saying, the whole tenor of this whole piece about, uh, people not liking the environment are feeding into it and making it up. We just heard tonight, a whole report, that all these things that were reported are unsubstantiated, they can't track it down, it was from people that nobody in that community had nothing either.
So, overall, now, Mayor Reed, I'm sure you both have heard from several council members, including myself, about security, about raiding out security. It needs to happen now rather than later, because it's been a few months that we've raised that issue. And it seems to be getting more and more intense, so the need for it needs to be addressed like immediately.
Well, I can, I can say that one of the first steps, um, that you will see is that armed security guards downstairs during the, um, normal working hours as well as during council meetings. Visitors to City Hall will have to check in, register in, they'll be given a visitor pass. Wherever they, they have business, that department will send a representative downstairs to greet their visitor and bring them upstairs to wherever it is that they're meeting. And when that meeting is over, they will return back downstairs. I will also have, um, one of the restrictions to the city manager's office restricted. The lady that came in and spoke today was very aggressive and actually I felt threatened by her. That's why the police was called to escort her out of the office. These offices are private offices. City Hall is a public building, but our offices are private and no one has the right to come in and take pictures and have a seat and do whatever all else in someone's office, especially now. Then, um, we are going to look at some of the other things that has been discussed at the staff level about how to secure, um, council chambers. One, of course, would potentially be wanting people as they come through that door to make sure that no one is bringing in, um, any weapons or anything of that magnitude. So, we are focusing on, um, how to make the building secure. This building unfortunately was built forty years ago. It's just so open, it's very difficult to secure each and every access, but we're gonna do the best we can to control access and to know where people are in the building. It is, um, a bit, bit haunting here late at night, I will tell you that, because I don't really know who's in the building and who's not, although the, um, janitorial staff is pretty good about closing up and locking up, but you just don't know how people can get in and stay there, you know, until, um, you look up and find some. So, we are, we are working on a plan and we can bring something back to you at the next meeting. I won't even wait until the committee will hold me, but at the next meeting, I'll tell you what the plans are to try to do what we can.
Well, I suppose this plan would be developed in, in touch with the police department and some, secured some, security professional.
There is a team of people who have been working on this for quite some time, and they are represented by police, fires, well inspections, some different coal issues. So, there's, there's a team of employees who are working property management.
So, kind of, we'd love for some officers who pretty much guard the door of council chambers, that they from, are they from private companies that are not our employees?
They're, they are our employees, and there are also, um, people who are not.
So, they, so they're not, they, they, when they sense something like tonight, it seems that they should somehow become more visible or, but they can't say anything unless the mayor says anything?
Right, well, they're, they're, they're really looking for direction from the mayor and I guess to some extent, you know, about motion, they're, um, closer to engage them with. And there have been some occasions when I have done that, seen them advance closer to the podiums and those.
I want to see more that may, who do become, they start ready for, I don't know, see the more visual.
With mayor asking, opening introduction to a session that you can't, your personal tasks, you can't call people names out that address the city council as a whole, not as individuals, and those are the guidelines that we expect people to go by. When they're not going by those guidelines, they think that if we don't call them at that point, the next person gonna think that.
And people have the right to criticize. I'm not.
Yeah.
People got the right to criticize, but nobody has the right to impose threats.
Yes.
And intimidation on other people. That's incorrect. It's incorrect.
Well, I know it wouldn't be tolerated if it was in that National County building or any of the other places I've been. Just appearance of someone talking loud would be, you know, taken out. But I'm just saying, I don't have a problem people calling names, you know, uh, Councilman Knight, Councilman, uh.
Yeah.
Watson and so forth and so on.
But not, not no threatening.
Right, but, you know, yeah, you know, so.
So, my last question about manager is, do you have a timetable as to when some type of speaker could be implemented or?
Well, as I was saying, the, the issue downstairs, I'm sure will be implemented in short order. Chief Robinson was, was working on that project. Others, you know, will take a little time because it is improvements to the building and that's something, because, trust me, it is definitely the priority, uh, because not only is it security for myself, but it's also security for my, my employees. And, um, you know, we were just fortunate that it wasn't any worse than what it could have been. And that's really for all over the, the building, quite honestly, it's not just the city manager, the office, but that's what every, every department, every office in this building is very vulnerable, it's very open to things, bad things happening. So, we've got to fix that.
Anything else?